Okay, folks, let us gather together, bring to a start the City Commission Conference Meeting this October 15th, 2024. Wow, where is this month going already? Not fast enough, I guess. Yeah. I don't know where Commissioner Sturman is, but hopefully he's on his way. Is anyone from his staff here? Oh, he's here? Okay. Okay. Oh, there you are. Okay, good. We'll start with our communications in the City Commission. We have one communication from the Sustainability Advisory Board. And is Dr. Gassman here, or who's from the, who from Public Works wants to talk about this? Okay.
Glenn Hadwin, Sustainability Manager. The Sustainability Advisory Board was approached by Parker Jacobson Bertanzetti, who's a high school junior, and she expressed an interest in the board. She's attended the SAB's meetings dating back to June, and the SAB would like to officially recognize her participation as, by creating a youth, a non-voting youth chair position as part of the board, and appointing her as the first occupant of that position.
Okay. Anyone have any thoughts on that? I personally, as long as it's non-voting, and also, I would want it such, if we agree to do that, I would think that it's not a requirement that we fill it every, every year or every term, but that it's available if a student, you know, or set, or a group of students are interested. I think it's great to help, to help inculcate individuals who are interested in sustainability goals of our city, and at the same time, help mentor them so that, you know, they'll be future leaders of our city. So what does the rest of the commissions seem to think about that?
I agree.
Okay.
I think it's a good idea. I do have a question in regards to the up to six one-year terms. How does that, if you could define, like, is it middle school to high school, or continuance, like high school into, like, 19 into college?
I think that's a maximum, and if it's a non-voting position, that can be modified. I mean, she's a junior, you know, I would imagine a lot of, anyone who's interested, a lot of them go off to college, so I don't see this particular, Parker being able, it's unlikely she would participate beyond a couple of years.
Yes, but the opportunity for others who may have the same desire, would it be an opportunity for, like, an eighth grader to say, "I want to be a part of this," and then I, you say it's up six, up to six years.
Right.
So that's why I'm asking, how does, what does that look like? So that's why I'm asking, how does, what does that look like?
I think that's a great question. I don't, I don't think the board had quite contemplated how young we could go. I think height, I think their thought was probably high school students would be the ideal age for, to participate.
And who picks that student?
I mean, at this point, I mean, what they've done here is they were approached by someone who expressed an interest in the board, asked the commission to approve that.
Well, you want the commission to approve the position. Do you want the commission to approve the person, too?
Well, this communication is asking you to do two things: approve the position, and then approve Parker, who has already attended several SAB meetings.
I think I would like to meet this person.
Okay.
I think it only makes sense, so if we have that opportunity to meet the person. So there's consensus, I guess, on the commission.
Question, is it, is it high school, or what does it start? What's the grade it starts at?
Well, that is actually not defined in this communication. I think probably high school would be a great idea.
Well, it's kind of funny. You mentioned, you mentioned, six years is for the position, or six years is for each particular individual to stay on it for six years?
In, in the communication, they suggested six, a maximum of six one-year terms. Now, that, now, we could, it may make sense to make that shorter, like, four years would be a whole high school career.
There's, there's a funny thing. When I was in high school, there was this guy, I won't mention his name, but he was a president of the senior class, very popular guy, and turns out, he didn't, he did not graduate, unfortunately. So he ended up running, again, for the president of the senior classes, the incumbent. So he said six one, depending on whether they graduated. It was, it was a funny, and he ended up winning, so two years in a row.
So he had most experience.
Yeah, but, no, maybe a shorter term, so, you know, to get to cycle it around for more students.
Wasn't you, was it?
No, 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 it was never that popular in high school.
All right, so, so who thought it would be this complicated? So, so yes, we, I think the commission agrees that a student, person could participate.
Yes.
There should be a student position. I think we'd like to meet this person that you're recommending. I think that there, I think that that would, we should leave the age minimum at the discretion of the commission as we, you know, review that person's qualifications. And I think that, and that they should serve, you know, up until, I mean, what happens if they're a local college student, you know, they're going to Broward College? So, so the six one-year terms is fine.
Okay.
And we'll, and we'll see, you know, each, each time whether that person qualifies. Okay, very good. All right.
Okay.
So can that person come to the next meeting?
I can find out. They are in school. I don't know what their school hours, but they, maybe we could get them to come to a con, either a conference or-
Or an evening meeting. Well, some, you know, our conference meetings last, you know, through the later part of the afternoon, so normally, so if they could, I don't know which school they go to, but I assume they are out by three or three-thirty.
Right.
So, okay.
So I'll, we'll work on making that happen.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Phew, that was tough. All right, moving on to business one. So this is a presentation on the city of Fort Lauderdale's development review process in Florida statute one sixty-six point oh-three-three. I imagine the genesis of this conversation stems from the confusion and the concern that the community had over the sage approval process. So Al, do you want to begin this conversation?
I will. Good afternoon, everyone. Al Battle, Acting Director for Development Services. So I'm gonna provide a little bit of backdrop. I'm gonna be accompanied in the presentation by two other staff members, and I'll let them speak after I do a brief introduction in terms of how we got here today. So at the last meeting, the ten, October first meeting, we had a agenda item that was prepared as a commission call-up for nine hundred intracoastal. We were informed after the agenda was published that this particular item did not qualify for the call-up period because technically, we didn't have the authority to call it up. The site plan was approved, and the developer did not provide an extension, or give us an extension past the commission call-up period. So had a discussion at the last meeting where we discussed a number of things, so several of which included kind of how we got here, what were the missteps by staff, how the communication back and forth between the development team and the city staff occurred, and what pieces may have been missing, or what issues needed to be considered to make improvements, or to figure out a way to correct the process. So at the conclusion of that discussion, commission asked the city manager to have staff present today what we would call kind of an overview of the development review process in context of the state statute that governs the review for applications, as well as to kind of talk through in detail how staff reviews, receives reviews, sets dates to comply with the statute, and what we ask from the development community. And last, we'll provide some recommendations on things that we believe can make the process better. No one recommendation is panacea, but some of them together may be some great policy and process improvements that we can use going forward. So the second person who will come up is more, I would call the resident, one of the resident experts with respect to the process. She deals with it every day and has since the statute was put into place, and that is Acting Deputy Director for Development Services, Ella Parker.
Okay.
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Ella Parker, Acting Deputy Director, Development Services. So Florida statute one sixty-six thirty-three dictates development review timelines. Within thirty days after receiving an application, staff must review it for completeness. If the application is deemed deficient, the applicant has thirty days to resubmit, and this can happen up to three times. For quasi-judicial projects, within a hundred and eighty days after the application is deemed complete, the city can approve or deny the application, and extension may be granted by agreement of both parties. So in comparing the statute and the DRC process timeline, the city's code actually specifies a five-day completeness review, and then a public notice for city-recognized associations within three hundred feet is sent twenty-one days prior to the DRC. Then the DRC meeting typically takes place within twenty-two days of completeness, and then the applicant responds to DRC comments, and this is where the timeline varies a little bit, but to align with the statute, it would be approximately forty days. Then a minimum of thirty days prior to the Planning and Zoning Board, the applicant holds the public participation meeting. This is where the notice is provided to city-recognized associations within three hundred feet, and an affidavit is evidence that the applicant has completed these requirements. The Planning and Zoning Board meeting then typically takes place forty-five days after the application's submittal, and then the thirty-day call-up provision is provided, and then that leaves approximately thirty-eight days for a potential de novo hearing to be, to take place. So this is more of a typical timeframe, where the applicant provides for the extension and takes more, like, a hundred days, sometimes even up to a hundred and eighty days to respond to technical comments. And these include things like traffic study analysis, drainage requirements, easements, you know, and any sort of issues that have to do with addressing the technical aspects of the project, sometimes take a lot longer than forty days. And that obviously takes us outside the state timeframe. So since January two thousand and twenty-one, there have been a total of twenty-eight site plan level-three applications, ten provided for extensions, seven provided for waivers, three were called up, and then the eleven that you see up there, that was partly, you know, ones that just didn't provide anything, was prior to us adopting a policy. And then the average overall review time has actually been around three hundred days. Four applications were approved within a hundred and eighty days. The commission call-up process was introduced into the city's code in nineteen ninety-seven, and that was provided in the code so that if it was found that a project requires additional review to ensure protection from development impacts, that that provision would, allowed the commission to call up an item, or call up an application. So currently, the motion to, to be considered, is to be considered within thirty days, and then the actual de novo, setting of the de novo hearing should happen within sixty days after that motion is considered. And I'll defer it to Chris to go over some potential code enhancements as, as the next part of the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Chris Cooper, Acting Assistant City Manager. So, who do we do this? Got it. So as part of the work that we did, we came up with a series of recommendations, working with DSD staff as well as city attorney's staff. So some of these do require policy direction, so when we go through these recommendations today, we'd like your feedback on what you think, as well as some direction on moving forward. So the first is that we would require a pre-development meeting for any quasi-judicial applications. Quite often, applicants, especially for more complex projects, will come to us for a pre-development meeting. That's a good time for us to go over the code requirements of their project and give them some informal feedback before an application's even submitted. Second is something-
Is that done now?
So it's voluntary. It's not a requirement. So what the recommendation is, is to make that a requirement, that if somebody's submitting an application for a quasi-judicial development application, that they're required to do that pre-development meeting with us. So second is a public participation notice twenty-one days prior to DRC. That's in the code now, but what we want to do is make that part of our completeness review process, to make sure that that's something that we can check off before we take an application and deem it complete. The third recommendation is to amend our completeness review section of the ULDR, which is currently now that we have to do it within five days of receiving the application, to make it thirty days, which is, again, consistent with the Florida statute. Second, or the fourth, I'm sorry, recommendation is to set the DRC date as the completion date, and what that would do is it would start the one hundred and eighty-day review period at that point, rather than an earlier date where we're not doing much with the application, where we're starting it at the date that we have that formal conversation of the application with the applicant, to let them know of any issues and deficiencies with their project.
Hold on. So when you say, "set the DRC date as the completion date," what does that mean? I thought the DRC, I thought the completion date was when DRC was concluded.
No, so right now, in the, in the, in our ULDR, the, the completeness review is what starts our clock, and that's consistent with the statutory language. So when an application comes in and it meets all the criteria of the ULDR to be a complete application, which includes several specific items, but it also includes a broad item of information that's needed to fully review the project, that is when that application's deemed complete. So we may get all that information within that timeframe and say that the application's complete, but the DRC meeting may not be for another week or two after that period. So we're trying to buy back as much time as we can in the process to, to not have wasted or empty time in that one hundred and eighty-day timeframe. The, the, I wasn't counting, fifth application is to set a PCB application deadline based on backing up the process from the end of the call-up period in the code for a quasi-judicial application. So essentially, what we would want to codify is that if an application to go to the Planning and Zoning Board is not received by staff by a certain timeframe of that application, that that application can be denied at that point. Now, at that point, somebody could give us a waiver or an extension, but we want to have that in our code that says staff does have the right to deny an application at that period of time when we know there may not be enough time to get through the full process.
So what if this, what if the staff forgets, or, or ignores it? What happens? Shouldn't it, shouldn't it be an automatic trigger that it's denied, rather than having to wait? I mean, this whole problem's happened because of staff mistake. We don't want another opportunity for a staff mistake.
So that's the kind of feedback we're looking for. So we'll work with legal, and when we bring you back that code language, we'll have to go to Planning and Zoning Board as well, because this is in the, in the land development code. That's something that we would work with legal to make sure we could, we could include in the, in the codification of that requirement.
Okay.
So next, we would accept waivers that application's submittal only. So if somebody wanted to waive the entire timeframe, we would take that at, at the time the application is submitted. We would consider an extension at that PCB deadline date, and I think one recommendation we make from what we heard is that instead of having a single point of, I think the term was "single point of failure" in that process, we would want that extension to be reviewed and approved at a higher level than the case planner. So potentially a department director, ACM, city manager level acceptance of that extension. We are recommending to amend our commission request for review timeframe. Currently, it's a thirty day, but as you can see, if we went back to the timeline of a, of a typical application, that thirty days can make a big difference. So we are recommending shortening it to somewhere around seven days for the commission to let us know if they want to call that up. So that would, that would pare down that from thirty days to seven days. And then, one thing that we're seeking some feedback on is just a consideration, is if an application does go past the deadline, which, again, we're looking for fail-safe, so that does not happen, but if there's any interest in if, if something happens where that does occur, that we would bypass our Planning and Zoning Board and come straight to commission for that review of that application. And then lastly, this is more of a administrative change, but we would seek to add draft minutes to the agenda if need be, rather than having the final minutes. Our final minutes from our Planning and Zoning Board are approved at the next meeting, that's thirty days later. You know, if we were able to use draft minutes, we could, we could get those items moved forward if they come to commission a lot sooner than, than that thirty day, possibly further out because of the time that is taken with getting final minutes and getting them to you as an agenda.
Okay. Does that complete your presentation?
It does.
Okay. Anyone have any questions of any of the people that just spoke? Yes, Commissioner Sturman.
Oh, my goodness, I have a few things. Just, I know, for people that are listening out there, you know, some people know this like the back of their hand, and some people, like, their head is spinning a little bit. So just, just to simplify it, you know, site one, two, three, and four plans, okay? A site one plan is strictly administrative.
It's administrative.
Okay. A site four plan automatically goes to the city commission. So site one and site, this doesn't involve a site one and a site four. Though, one of them goes straight administrative, one goes straight to, to city commission.
So it's anything that's quasi-judicial. So there's some items that are level-two that do have a commission call-up.
And I'm gonna talk about that in a second.
Specifically in our regional activity centers, level threes are typically your Planning and Zoning Board, conditional uses, things of that nature that do come to commission. Level four will come to commission.
Okay. So, so for public, a level three, a level three goes to planning and zoning.
Correct.
And from planning and zoning, the city commission does have a right to call up a level three. Now, here's the big one, and this involves this project, as well as several other projects, including Snyder Pickleball, a few other ones, a lot of confusion. A level two, a level two goes to DRC. And so, I mean, I don't think a lot of the public realizes this, but this is still, it's not a citizen board, it's a, it's a staff review.
Yeah, so level-two projects are, are those projects that are, meet the requirements of the ULDR. So those, those projects come in, and there's no deviation, there's no conditional use, anything like that. Again, if it's in a regional activity center, it would go to the commission as a call-up, but something like, you mentioned the Snyder Park Pickleball case, that was a level-two project. If it met the requirements of the code, it would be approved at that DRC staff level.
Justin, I mean, we had spoken extensively about this, and Ms. D. Wayne, I'm gonna call you up in a second, too, if you just, I guess if Mayor goes, "You're one, two, and three," you'll be number two if you want to go on standby. I am gonna have you come up here. And we had spoken about this recently, we spoke about this months ago, and we spoke about this when we came up at first, so the public is aware of this. Level three, DR, Planning and Zoning, subject to come up, a call-up. Level two, with, with a few exceptions, is not subject to call-up. We, no, if we want to, we cannot call it up, unless it's in the rack typically. So level two, now, the Snyder Park project was a level two.
Yes.
It was not in the rack. Was that subject to call-up?
No, it was a use that was permitted in the Park Zoning District. They complied with the requirements of the code. It was not, it was not a call-up request. It was, it was a level two.
Mr. D. Wayne, could you come up here if you can? We have spoken about this extension to me in real time when it first came up, and just, we had spoken about this this weekend again. Do you concur, is a level two, like Chris says, a level-two project outside of the rack, a DRC, was that subj, on Snyder Park, was that subject to call-up?
No, that was a, a level-two site plan development review. That was not subject to this.
So if I wanted to call up, it was not subject to call-up?
That's correct.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to get that clear. Okay, thank you. Oh, by the way, Chris, a couple other things, if you could come back up here. And I thank you both very much. Some questions that, that have come up, and we discussed this. I know you, you touched upon it, but the timeframe, the one eighty days, what, what is, you went through it again, but just to simplify, what is the quote "completed"? I mean, is it, I guess it was when we received an application, we deemed it completed. It has not even gone to DRC, but we, we, it's sitting there being compl, and there's any delay, the clock is running once we've received it. Is that correct?
The clock is running. So when an application comes into staff, that, that application is assigned to a planner in our, our planning department, they review it based on what the code requires as a complete application. Again, it's a number of specific things that also includes kind of a blanket. If there's anything needed to review this application, you know, we can ask for it. The code says that has to be done within five days. So if you look at that language in our code, and you look at the state statute, you know, they both mention completeness, so we, we say at that five-day period that that application, if it's deemed complete, the clock starts. Now, the DRC meeting may not be scheduled till the next week or the week after, depending on volume and scheduling, but, but that's why we're looking to extend that to thirty days so that we can start that clock- so that we can start that clock as closer on the date of that DRC meeting, so there's not wasted time in the process.
Okay, so the question, the five day, is it five days from the time they submit it that we have to complete it?
Right.
What happens if it's not complete?
So we send them a response that says, "You're missing X, Y, and Z." Similar to what the state statute says, they, they need to provide us with that missing information before we can deem it complete. Or if they submit a waiver of the entire deadline, if they say, "Take whatever time you need," not an extension, a waiver, you know, we can work with them through that process. The clock turns off at that point.
Here's a question, and I was thinking about this, you're an attorney, or you play one on TV, Mr. Mayor. Is there a way that we could redefine the word "complete"? In other words, is it, once it goes or schedules for DRC, or once it gets scheduled, or once it's heard, could we call that the completed date?
So that was our recommendation, was to extend the completion time from five days to 30 days to align with what the statute provides, but then also have that DRC date as the start of the clock.
Oh, that five days is self-imposed by us?
It's self-imposed by us, it's in our code.
Well, that's a, that's a, I mean, how far can we go? Is it 30 the maximum?
That, it's consistent with state statute, so our recommendation is to change that from five to 30.
And could we call "completed" when it's scheduled for DRC? I mean, they could schedule, and we could lose a month.
Yeah.
Just, is there a way that we could do that?
No, that's our recommendation.
Well, it, it's your recommendation, but it still comes within the 180-day period. So we're not extending the 180 days by going from five to 30. It just gives us, you know, just keep that in mind, I don't want to be any confusion-
No, 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 you are. The "completed" will be, will be from the time, they're deeming it completed, he just said, from the time it was scheduled. So they don't have to, they have five days to deem it complete. If we have 30 days to deem it complete, the clock starts on the date they deem it complete, which gives us an extra 25 days to-
Yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't change the situation that we were confronted with, with Sage.
Well, the 180, it just gets shifted, it gets shifted 30 to 25 days. It gives us another 25.
So it starts, the, under our proposal, the, the clock would start at that 30 days, consistent with what the statute says.
Is there any other way that we could extend that? I mean, does it have to be?
So I don't think we can extend it, but some of our other recommendations get to either creating requirements in the process that, you know, would be a decision point of whether the application is deemed withdrawn or denied, or can move forward, or looking at ways we can shorten our current processes to buy some of that time, to shorten some of those, those horizons so that we can compress the schedule.
D. Wayne, could you come up here for a second? We're getting a lot of exercise here today. If we're running out the clock, and it's getting close to that time, and it's, for instance, it's not, we've had this scenario three times where you do the math, and it's gonna come before DRC, Planning and Zoning, whatever body, and by the time we have the chance to call it up, we might call it up within that 80, 180, but we're not gonna have another meeting beforehand. Could we, are we allowed to automatically deny, they say we could deny them, could we deny the application?
So that's one of the things that we're, we're looking at. What the state statute provides is that the action that you have to take is one of three actions, it's either approve, approval of conditions, or deny the project. I'm looking at certain provisions of our ULDR that are, that has a, have prerequisites to the issuance of a development permit, and one of that, one of those conditions being that it has met the development review process completely. But the statute also requires that we issue notice of denial and cite to our code section that provides for that denial. So we would have to formalize that process, authorizing staff within a certain timeframe to deem the, that the application has not met the requirements of the ULDR and therefore would be denied. And, and I think that would, if we can beef that lang, or put language like that in the code, that can beef up the authority to address these issues, particularly when individuals aren't providing us, so if they had an extension of time to get through the, the commission review process.
Well, here's, here's my thought, and I'm just trying to, to crystallize this. If we run the clock, and we administratively say that we're not gonna have time to give the opportunity for a call-up, if we deny it on that basis, the basis that the clock is running, we deny that, that sets the clock again for us, are we liable now for, is that a legitimate reason to deny it, or are we gonna be liable, maybe for lawsuits legally, for denying it on that ground?
So it's, it's likely that someone will challenge us. The, the question is, do we have a argument to address in court? I'd say we do have an argument, whether it's a successful one or not, would be a question. I mean, the alternative is to completely revamp our development review process here in the city and probably eliminate the commission request for review process completely. So I don't think you have much options with regards to how you want to address this. So, you know, part of that, the recommendations that you see from staff with regards to, particularly the bullet point, and the second-to-last bullet point, where you flag those applications that, you know, have sufficient time and just bypass PNC and go straight to city commission agenda, that provides you with a little bit more standing in that the city commission is actually reviewing and doing the final action in terms of reviewing the application. So puts a little bit more teeth to what's recommended. So we have various ways that we are thinking of, you know, or recommending that you review for approaching this.
Dean, can I, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I was listening to what you were saying, and the question, if we have an automatic stopgap, sort of like, you know, a spot there that we're gonna be running out the clock, and somebody in the city intervenes, what, your thought was to do, an automatic denial at that point, to, to-
Well, we have to, we have to find ways to remove human error from the process. So what we're hearing today is that if we do deny an application within, that's, we're on day 179, okay? DRC still, the whole DRC process isn't even finished yet, they're still haggling back and forth. Staff is, you know, wanting certain things out of this developer, and the developer is hemming and hawing. I mean, I'm just taking this typical scenario, all right? So 179 days has arrived, you know, what do we do? So my belief is that in order to avoid staff not making the affirmative, taking the affirmative act of denying it, we should have some sort of built-in process that if DRC is not complete, the review process is not complete, then it should be an automatic denial. But what D. Wayne is telling us, that we have to give specific reasons, which we, which we could-
Right.
Right? But then take it one step further, let's say DRC is already completed, that the, the various disciplines have reviewed it, and, and it's gone now to Planning and Zoning Board. And the Planning and Zoning Board, you know, their scheduled meeting is on day 187. And so the applicant says, "Okay, we'll, we'll do it another seven days." I don't think that any extension should be at the discretion of a, a staff member. Any extension must automatically be sufficient time with the correct wording that specifically says it's X number of days, maybe another 180 days, or when the city commission has an opportunity to review, or the earlier of the two dates. This should be like 180 days extension, no less than 180 days, or time within which the city commission has time to call it up. That would include the PNC, I don't want to cut PNC out of this, I mean, that's why we have advisory boards. And so there should be enough time for PNC, enough time for a commission call-up. If within the 30 days or wherever number of days, if you, you're recommending seven-day call-up time period, that's fine, too. But if the city commission should automatically have that right, not be denied that right because a staff person didn't do the addition correctly. So what I'm saying, and what I said at the last meeting, was that there should, in order to get an extension, there has to be an automatic 180-day extension or nothing. And, and that, and that it be done, and that it be done within the 180 days, or within the timeframe in which the city commission had an opportunity to, 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 to indicate a, a desire to, to a call-up, and to have that enough time to have a de novo hearing, whichever is less. Because it could be less time, it could be 90 days, it could be 80 days. So I just think we should not have, we should take out as much opportunity for human error as possible, and just have very strict timeframes so that this should never happen again.
So I do like the way you phrase that in terms of a number of days or a certain step in the process, whichever comes first, and I think we could probably codify some of that and make that part of the code for how extensions are considered, and granted, it would give certainty to everybody in the process-
Exactly.
-and, and creates, so we'll, we'll add that to the recommendations.
Does that make sense to you?
Well, the beauty of what you're suggesting is there's a, there's a incentive to kick the can down the road by the developers to run the clock out. You do it this way, there's an incentive to actually work harder with us to get this thing done.
Correct.
And I, yeah, and I would, I would support that, yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll add that to the list. And I think I'm hearing maybe not add the ability for any bypass of PNC, which I-
We don't want to bypass PNC, no. We don't want to-
I agree with that.
I even think worst-case scenario, that's a pretty bad scenario.
We want community input, you know, that, we don't want to bypass.
And I certainly don't want to supplant PNC's expertise.
Yeah. Totally get that.
That's why these were recommendations for consideration.
Okay.
Appreciate that feedback.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions of Mr. Cooper? Because we have a few people sign up to speak.
One question, Chris, one question. That public participation notice, for everyone to understand, what does that look like, and how is public invited into this process?
So there's, there's two points, actually three, if it comes to commission, that the public gets engaged in a process that's in the quasi judicial realm of things. First is a, a notice prior to DRC, which is, which is a recent addition, not a recent addition, but that's, that's outreach to the civic association. Second is, prior to PCB, there's a notice requirement for any property owner within 300 feet and any recognized civic association that it's in, that they get a mail notice. So that's first-class mail that's sent to the owner of record with the property appraiser and tax collector. So, you know, that may be, in some cases, the actual physical location within 300 feet, that may be somebody that, that gets those things sent to a house in another area, just depending on how they have that ownership set up and that address. And that advertises the public participation, participation meeting that the applicant's required to hold prior to the Planning and Zoning Board meeting.
So the notice by first-class mail seems to me another opportunity for error.
Yes.
And that should be by certified mail, so there's a return receipt, because just, just, you know, so an applicant can sign a, a statement saying, "Oh, yeah, we, we told everybody, and, and we're taking that at face value," and in fact, that may not have occurred. In fact, in the Sage situation, we're getting communications from people within the 300 feet that have indicated that they were not communicated with. So, which we'll address at another time, but-
Right, and that was part two of my, my question, how are we validating that the notices for participation is going out?
So it's the affidavit, the code talks about that the affidavit itself is evidence of, you know, in a quasi judicial process, that the, the public notice requirement has been met. There's also a signed notice at the site, as well as a newspaper publication as well.
Right, but signed notice-
What does a sign say?
I think we can tighten it up.
Our code specifically provides that, that failure to receive notice shall, shall on no grounds invalidate the hearing, as this provision is directory and not mandatory. So our code, code does require notice, but it, it provides a failsafe that says if you don't receive notice, that doesn't invalidate the hearing whatsoever. And I think that safeguard is in there for cases where one individual decides to try and subvert the process by just alleging that they didn't receive notice. But I understand what the mayor is suggesting with regards to certified mail, although expensive, but-
Well, it's expensive, but I mean, we're talking about million, hundreds of millions of dollars worth of projects, so I think we can, you know, justify the cost. But the point is, though, that, that we need, like Commissioner Beasley Pittman said, there needs to be some validation that, in fact, the notice process did take place, not just taking the word of a developer, say, "Oh, yeah, I did it."
Because there's, there's instances where notices come after the fact. You know, you mailed it, but am I really being notified after the date of the hearing? So those are, you know, that's what's driving my questions. How do we validate that neighbors are being informed in a timely manner for participation? And that doesn't, in my view, that doesn't mean send me a, a letter on Thursday for a meeting that's on Monday. So how do we tightening, tighten that part of it up so it is beneficial to the neighbors as well?
I, I think the mayor's suggestion is probably the only way of, of tightening that up in terms of getting certified mail, receipt notice.
And D. Wayne, we've talked about this through the years. This is not the first time we've had this conversation about, about doing this with certified mail, and we've always rejected that as not really functional. I can tell you, actually, I just went through this very recently, because apparently they've changed my neighborhood, and it's now in a flood zone. And so I'm getting a notice from the bank telling me that I now need flood zone insurance. So I come home one afternoon, and there's a sticker on my door saying, "We tried to deliver something that was required," a signature, and of course, I wasn't there, because I was at work, and then they don't leave it.
Correct.
And then I called up, and I said, "Okay, what post office is it at?" And so they sent me up to Pompano, went, stood online in Pompano for an hour, only to find out that it wasn't in Pompano, it was in Oakland Park. And so I waited another week or so till I got around. So three weeks later, I finally went and got this letter to find out it was the same one that they had already mailed to my house, but apparently they mailed one and then wanted one with a return receipt, too. So just return receipt requested, in this day and age, people aren't home, people get their mail, they throw it in the trash, especially all the stuff we're sending them right now. Everything goes directly from the mailbox into the trash. So this is going to be an ongoing problem. People don't pay attention to their mail anymore, they don't expect to get anything in the mail that they actually want. So, you know, we need to be adapting to-
So what do you recommend, though, to validate the authenticity of a developer saying they gave notice, and in fact, they may not have given notice?
So let's, let's say, let's say something was sent out, return receipt requested, and, and, and the individual never signs for it.
Okay.
I didn't get it, I never got it. So, so like with my notice, for example, from the bank, I never got it.
Right.
Guy stopped at the door, I wasn't there, he couldn't get a signature, I never went to the post office to pick it up, because I didn't know what it was.
Or if you just know what it is, and you just don't accept it.
Well, I didn't know what it was.
But I'm just saying, there are situations in which, in which a resident may know what it is, and doesn't accept it, not knowing what, not, a lot of people just don't like to accept certified mail.
A lot of people just don't answer the door anymore.
Well, but I'm not talking about that. Let's just stick to the issue. I mean, if someone sees a, an attempt at certified mail, a lot of folks don't want to accept it, because it's never good news.
It rarely, right, rarely is it, like, somebody just died and left you a million dollars, right?
Right, it's very rarely done that way. So the point is, yeah, but the point is that, that we have to, we have to come up with a process that's more than just sending out by first, first-class mail, because there's no way for us or any of the residents within 300 feet to know that they were notified. We've got, we can't just take the word of the applicant, because we just can't take the word of the applicant.
But, but, what I'm saying, Mayor, is I think people are more likely to be notified if it's not return receipt requested, because most people are not going to be there to actually sign for the document, and they're not gonna do what I did, which is drive to the post office to go get it and waste a decade.
Oh, so you're saying certified, so we could, we could verify it was delivered?
Correct.
They don't have to sign, but at least you certified that it was delivered.
Correct.
Oh, that's a-
Or an attempt to, or-
An attempt to deliver, right.
Or an attempt to deliver.
Right.
But sending it by first-class mail is, is, there's no way to justify that. So unless you want to send it by FedEx or UPS with signature required, which is even more expensive-
Well, and it's the same problem of needing, the problem is needing a signature, which is why, for example, most of the things that I need a signature for, I'll have delivered to the office here at the city, because I'm more likely to get it delivered and received if it comes to my office than if it comes to my apartment. If it comes to my apartment, I'm never there.
So John's thing is that we have to verify that we gave it to them, whether they read it or not, it's not our concern.
Right. But how, how do we know that, right, how do we know that they received it? And if they're not leaving it because it requires a signature, then I think even less people are going to get it than if we just do first-class mail. So I, I don't have an answer to it, but I'm just saying, having just gone through this in the last two weeks, I can tell you, if it requires a signature, I'm probably not gonna do it.
So it's burdensome, maybe, but you could do both. I mean, for code enforcement notices, the state, the state requires we do first certified[1756.29] the state requires we do first certified and a posting. I'm not suggesting we go post a bunch of doors. But, you know, there are situations where both first class and certified are the method of notification.
Here's another thought. Which is true, which, and so that's not, that at least covers more bases if you do that.
Right.
Here's, also, I think you do this anyway, but just to clarify, you said within 300 feet, any 100 foot feet. How about you also loop in any HOA within three, even if just a little piece of that HOA is within there, do you loop them in too? Because, you know, like their entrance or exits or traffic lights of that whole neighborhood would be affected by some of these projects.
We do. I think the code, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's any civic association within that 300 foot radius is officially recognized. So, those are the ones that are part of our recognized civic association group.
And they could use their resources, emails, newsletters, whatnot.
Yeah, and those groups get our DRC agendas. So, we reach out to the recognized civic associations with a lot of that development information.
Okay.
Quick question for you. This is a suggestion from my assistant Amanda. She said, "Could the city send out the notifications and then just get reimbursed by the developer? So, that way, we know that they went out." I mean, because we all work on the same list, right? We don't, they don't develop an independent list, right? They get the list from the property appraiser's office. It tells them every, there's a circle, we all know the list. Could we send out the notices and then simply make that part of the application fee? And that way, we know they went out?
We could. I mean, it's labor intensive, so we may need to look at staffing and we charge them. But, you know, if we could, we might come back to you with a request to add an admin assistant or something like that.
So, there's got to be some, whether we take that approach or certified mail, there has to be some place, some method to ensure that we know notice had gone out.
Sure.
So, whether the city does it or by certified mail or both.
Well, at least we can't dispute it. If we're doing the mailing, we can't dispute that it got mailed out. We have no incentive to not mail it out. There won't be any gaming of the system in that respect.
Just blame the post office if anything goes wrong.
I blame them all the time.
One other question with that, that you stemmed the thought. Alert FTL, is that something that could be considered?
I don't think so. I think that's for emergency purposes.
It's only for emergency purposes?
Right.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else have any questions? I have a few people sign up to speak. Abby Loughlin, followed by Suzie Bursting, and followed by Jimmy Concanon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. First of all, thank you very much for bringing this agenda item to fruition. It really needed to be discussed. It was, that was a tragedy. That was a big tragedy. But, you know, going forward, let's see what we can do to make it a better process. So, in regards to the proposed code amendments that you have up there, the issue that I think caused, you know, Sage to come to the level that it did is that it changed, it changed, you know, in the resident size, it changed so much from when it was originally submitted to DRC, that we feel that, you know, right now, the only modification on a site plan that would cause it to go back to DRC for further review would be if the developer changed the density on the project. We were told that that's the reason it didn't go back to, you know, to DRC when it changed the height so significantly. So, you know, any other modifications such as height, right now, do not have to go back to the DRC. I think that's what needs to change. I mean, if a project changes their height by, you know, some percentage, it should need to go back to DRC. And at that time, also have another notice community meeting review. I mean, if you have a, if you want to have a site plan amendment, I think if you want to change your property by more than 20%, you know, you have to go through the site amendment process. So, perhaps, you know, in this case, if the height's going to change by more than 20%, that would be another condition for it to go back for review. I also wouldn't allow modifications such as this so late in the process because that puts the timeline at risk. Maybe you're fixing that with some of these other, some of the items. A copy of the timeline for the, to final review should be included in all the development packages. So, when P and Z gets it, there should be, you know, a clear indication of the timelines. And the other issue really has to do, not so much with proposed code investments, but with the conditional review process. The conditional review process needs to be more stringent. You know, you're not taking away anybody's vested property rights by changing a criteria for conditional approval. And I think, you know, you need to, you need to look at that. That's one way to make the developer, you know, more accountable for what they consider a conditional approval. And I believe the code in terms of first class mail, I think the code, at least something I read for this, said first class mail or an email would suffice. So, maybe someone could check and make sure that that, that it's not, you know, and/or it should be first class. And I agree that the developers, the cost of the certified mailing should be borne by, borne by the developers. But there should be another neighborhood public participation meeting required other than just 21 days before the, before the DRC. Because as you know, you get to DRC, you change things, things go back and forth. So, I would like to see another public participation meeting, perhaps before the P and Z meeting, so that everyone is on the same page with what is, you know, being presented to P and Z. And those are my comments.
Great, thank you so much. Um, hang on, hang on. You bring up a couple of good points, if I can. Now, Chris is trying to leave. Chris, we love you. Here's the question. This project went from, it went from how many to how many? Eventually, it was like 300 feet or something like that? What was the very first rendition?
180, 175.
Is there a way that if it goes above, I mean, you more, like, you doubled the height. If something like that happens along the process, where you actually significantly changes the height, could that be a trigger for an automatic denial, that they just simply resubmit and get the 180 days started again?
Yeah, so, I don't know about a denial, and that's something we'd have to look at in our code. As far as amendment to the code, under our current code, it would be permitted to make those changes. This project in particular came in as a conditional use approval to go over to 150 feet. That application type never changed because they only increased. But I'm not saying there isn't a way or a thought that we couldn't have something in our code that would trigger some step back if something changes by a certain amount or if there's a significant change in the project.
Well, I think the point that's being asked here, though, is that because the applicant agreed to conditional process, conditional use process, it doesn't just open the door to infinity. There has to be some checkpoints along the way where staff doesn't have the, you know, the unfettered authority to go 1,000 feet tall, you know? I mean, there has to be some triggering mechanism that, whether, and it's not just height, by the way. It could be setback, you know? Side yard modifications, which are also a big nuisance. And so, there should be a percentage of the overall project that would, in itself, once you are asking for something different from what you first applied for, there should be a triggering mechanism that says, "Okay, we have to stop now because staff doesn't have the authority to go past a certain level."
So, I would go back. I think pre this state statute, when we sort of had this blanket ability to have an iterative process, work with the applicant, you know, make tweaks here and there, go back out to the community, have those conversations, as long as what you took to that decision-making body, which is the planning and zoning board, in this case, not DRC, that worked fine for everybody, I think. We got good architecture out of it, we got good projects, there was a lot of back and forth, a lot of community input. And the state has kind of put us in this bind now where we either have to get a waiver and extension or we have to work within their 180 day box. So, I think we're thinking of it now in terms of what you just described, of that context of what's, what change is too much change for it to not start back over? We never thought of that before, right? Because the process worked. We got good projects and good results out of it. So, I think we need to think more about what you're talking about. I just need to go back and figure out what that looks like in our code to make those triggers, to have that process work in the way you described. Okay.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question about that? Because the mayor just said something, and it's not, I think, consistent with my understanding. So, the mayor is suggesting that they could go up to 1,000 feet. Can they do that?
They cannot. So, they cannot. Downtown, we have.
Say it again? John, say that again.
You said that staff can give them the ability to go up to 1,000 feet, and I didn't think that. I thought we had height limits in place.
I was just exaggerating.
Okay.
But they went up to.
I don't want anybody left with the impression that they can go up to 1,000 feet.
But they went up to a 300 feet, and it may as well have been 1,000 feet, you know? The point is that they went up such an egregious amount without really going back to the process or reaching out to the community, that, I mean, I don't think staff should have that ability to, on its own, be able to almost double the size of a project when in fact, you know, this is not, you end up gaming the system. And we shouldn't allow that because there's a process where the neighborhood needs to be more involved, P and Z needs to be more involved, and certainly, the commission needs to have a weigh-in on this. As if, you know, I'm not saying that the 300 foot, you know, building in the appropriate place where this neighborhood compatibility, you know, would work. There are people in this particular situation who would think it doesn't work. But the point is that it should be a community decision, not a staff decision. Okay.
Understood.
Suzie? Hi.
Never been here. What do I?
You're on, you're on.
Hi. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, Mayor, Commissioners. Glad third time was the charm and you're taking action to get this fixed. Make it easy to live in Fort Lauderdale. It's hard to be a homeowner here. I've been, I've had three perspectives. I've been here as a snowbird. I've been here as a full-time renter, and I've been here as a homeowner. And it's hardest as a homeowner. And I'd like to see you guys streamline communication, work harder, not, work smarter, not harder. Newspaper notices for these, who looks in the newspaper for this? I've never, I've never known that there. But you guys have a strategic communications department with a really great public website? Why don't you post things there for the public? That could be, that could be an option. Also, I'd like to ask you to consider expanding beyond 300 feet. This was a really monumental project that's going to affect my neighborhood greatly beyond 300 feet. And those people had a right to know. And civic associations and homeowner associations, they're great, but they're all volunteer in the city of Fort Lauderdale. And not every resident is a member. So, I think that there should kind of be some duality as far as notices so that, you know, a non-member would have access or have some public notice. You know, also, please look at this presentation that it matches with your public presentation on the developmental review process video. And it's in layman's terms. Because this is a lot to digest for a layperson. So, maybe look to make sure that it's simplified for us. And neighborhood compatibility, the definition of that, I think that that's where this project failed, failed us. I don't know who was in charge of defining that, but I challenge that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Jim Concanon? Just to answer your question, neighborhood compatibility probably the thing that would have allowed us a call-up, just to let you know. So, I mean, that's something that would have come up had we had a full commission call-up. And that's something that we're addressing with that timeline. I do appreciate you bringing that up.
And I'll add to, you know, neighborhood compatibility is something that we have fought over and argued over and, I think, for as long as I've been here. There's just significant differences over what constitutes neighborhood compatibility. I don't know, Tom, is that something that we can define with any more?
You know it when you see it.
Well, yeah, unfortunately, yeah.
You would want to put in criteria to identify what that means.
Right, because we've moved away from, you know, we've tried to change how we approach zoning so that we could allow for creative projects. And that was one of the things that we did years ago to get away from very, you know, kind of strictured and structured sort of zoning to a more interpretive zoning, right? Do we need to maybe move back in that direction? Is that, so, just kind of looking for some guidance here from a legal perspective, because like you said, "I know it when I see it" is, is not, it's a very subjective standard.
It's not going to work in court, no.
Right, it doesn't hold up in court, right. So, how do we, how do we put more meat to that bone?
You would typically put five or six criteria and then ask, say, so that these are representative of what you're seeking.
Right.
The phrase lawyers love, including but not limited to.
We do have, we do have criteria, though.
Neighborhood compatibility, I don't.
We have, we have objective criteria in our code, I know that. Mr. Cooper?
Glad to be back. So, we do have some criteria in our neighborhood compatibility section. A lot of neighborhood compatibility also speaks to the interaction between conflicting uses, so residential versus commercial. I think when you get into residential versus residential, it really speaks to designs that are intended to mitigate the adverse impacts to your neighboring surroundings. So, you know, in a case like this, and I'll use another example, I don't want to use this one, but in another example.
Let's think about that one that we did along the New River, behind Riverside Hotel. That's a great example of where we argued for hours about what constitutes neighborhood compatibility.
So, a lot of it is, especially when you get into towers and those types of structures, it's the amount of light and air that reaches the ground level, that interaction of the project to the public realm, sidewalks, landscapes, streetscapes, things of that nature. Again, it's the mitigation of those adverse impacts that the project may have on its surroundings. So, with a conditional use request, like additional height, what the applicant needs to show is that the additional height is meeting neighborhood compatibility, potentially showing how the taller height may have reduced the negative impacts to the surrounding community. So, you may say it preserves, and this isn't guaranteed, but you could say it preserves a view corridor. Or you could say this more slender tower allows more light and air to the ground. I mean, there's arguments to be made, but that's why it's a little more general so that when you're requesting that conditional use and you have to prove neighborhood compatibility, it's incumbent on the applicant to make that case, not only to staff at DRC, but also the planning and zoning board and eventually the commission if it came before you as a call-up.
Okay. Not to belabor that issue, though, John. You know, back in the early 2000s, when we were trying to figure out what was best for Flagler Village, many of you may recall that Flagler Village was an area considered slum and blighted.
Yep.
And the community got together and created a master plan. And the master plan said, "Hey, we want height, we want density. What we see there today is what the community came to us and asked the commission, 'Please do this.'" Because Flagler Village was a place you didn't even, which was called Flagler Heights at the time, which was a place you didn't even want to drive your car through. So, today, what we're seeing is the fulfillment of that, of that community involvement and community engagement. But the paradox at the time, though, was the issue of neighborhood compatibility. So, there would be a developer who'd come to us and would want to build a 12-story building. And there were no 12-story buildings.
Right.
So, the question was.
Right, there's little garden apartments over there at that point, and single family cottages, yeah.
So, how do you, how do you gauge neighborhood compatibility? So, at that time, I suggested that neighborhood compatibility not just be what you currently have existing, but what is aspirational for the area. So, what was aspirational for the area was mid and higher-rise buildings. And that was in, that was in the master plan. So, our then staff person, her name was Cecilia Holler at the time, she argued against a 12-story building because she said it was not neighborhood compatible because it was a three-story building at the end of the block. And I explained to her that, "Well, we don't want three-story buildings in Flagler. We wanted the tall or mid-rise, and that's what the master plan called for." So, that debate kept going, but I think it has relevance throughout the entire city. You know, what do we want the neighborhood to look like versus what the neighborhood looks like now? With regard to the Sage project, I think that the folks are, the folks are happy with the way it looks now. They weren't looking for 300-story building, I mean, 300-foot buildings. So, but that's a, you know, it's an issue that is area-specific, depending upon what's there now and what the community wants to see there. So, we may have this come up again when the developer comes to us with regard to the Galleria project, you know? What do we want to see there versus what is there? And so, we may need some tweaking of that, of the zoning code there. Because we have to make sure that what we want to see there is consistent with what the neighborhood intent is today.
But that brings up a very interesting question for me. And again, I look back at Tom with respect to this, is, you know, how do we defend neighborhood compatibility when every neighborhood gets to decide on its own what they think neighborhood compatibility means? So, I want to, how do we have a defensible standard when we get sued? So, you know, I was reminded that Riverside Hotel. So, you know, I, I was reminded that Riverside Hotel, for example, was argued about neighborhood compatibility and went all the way to state Supreme Court.
Oh, the hotel itself?
The tower.
The tower, yeah. I wasn't, I wasn't involved at that time.
Come on, Mayor, you've been around at least as long as me now, come on.
I was, uh, I was in spring break, I think.
I would like to offer a quick plug since it was brought up with the Galleria. So we are working on a mixed-use code, uh, form-based code for our corridors. So Galleria in that area would be part of that. So I encourage anybody that, um, hasn't come out to one of those meetings, we're gonna have some more town halls, please come out because it's very important to get your feedback and input on that issue.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Concannon? You used up your three minutes.
Are we sure?
I used up your three minutes.
Okay. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you very much for bringing this back up. It's, I, we've spent a lot of time so far, right, just today, trying to figure out what the language is, how we move forward. Imagine the difficulty of at least just the four individuals that have tried to tear through all the code and tear through all the language and understand what this means and understand what the timeframes are because we haven't come up with any real decisions today. And we're, we're talking to the professionals, we're all working towards, I think, the same goal, neighborhood compatibility, that's a whole nother topic. But how do you not game the system? Or even if it's just by accident? So there's a couple of things that I would like to suggest. Coincidentally, they've already been mentioned, uh, I was going to suggest certified mail. That came up. Commissioner Herbst suggested sending it from the city. I was gonna suggest that because that puts the onus on the city to get the information out. It takes it away from the developer so we know that that information has been at least attempted to be transferred. I think one of the cornerstones of our concerns is that there's no clear understanding of the start date and when that 180-day clock ends. And that was pretty clear when this came up at the last commission meeting because the, the staff made an error, we understand that, but it's a very costly one because we have a new precedent that's been set. So that, that to me is really, really critical. There hasn't been clear communication to anybody about when the clock starts and when the clock ends. I think that's imperative and it needs to be communicated perhaps even in that certified communication. Abby brought up a very good point about email because in the code it says by mail or email. So you can ask an email for a return receipt. There are a lot of technology concepts that could be employed to get confirmation or at least confirmation that the communication, the notice has been disseminated to the community. And right now, there isn't anything like that. So I think clear documented communication also on the changes that are made to a project, to a proposed project. Because right now, a project is proposed at 175 feet and it comes in at, to call it rounded off, 300 feet. That to me, there should be a trigger, and it was mentioned earlier, there should be a trigger that sends that either back to DRC and I, I, I know, uh, we discussed that at the last meeting. It was still within DRC when that took place. But that major change, much greater, it was 67%, I believe, one of our, uh, workers, um, Mr. Folt calculated, that, that's a significant change, just like going from 175 to doubling the height or almost doubling the height. So when you have a marked change in the original design, whatever that is, height, shape, whatever it might be, that, that triggers some mechanism so that not only is the public informed, but the start date changes because now we have a new project. It's not the original one. It's a major, major modification to the original project. So I don't know how, I'm not an attorney, um, and I never played one on TV. So I, I, I think it's really important that we address this in a very succinct way and very shortly because there's going to be a lot of projects. This doesn't just affect my neighborhood, Sunrise Intercoastal. This affects every neighborhood in the city. So there's a long-term impact to neighborhoods and I think also a long-term impact to our perception, the neighborhood's perception, the public's perception of who the commission is, what government does, can we trust government? Can we say, yes, they say this and it's gonna happen? There's a code, we enforce the code. One more thing about neighborhood compatibility, and I know it's been batted about for years because I've been involved in this for years, maybe I'll retire soon. In the master plan, the comprehensive plan, which is part of the master plan, and I said it before, states the compatibility with and, with and preserve the character and integrity of the nearby neighborhoods. The character preserved, the character and integrity of nearby neighborhoods. That, there's a definition there, it's not that clear, but it gives a little clarity to what we're talking about today and I think in this case, in this particular project.
Jim, could I back you up though? Because I want to talk a little bit about what the mayor said. So the, the whole redevelopment of Flagler Village would not have occurred if we preserved the character of Flagler Village and what it was. Because to, to the mayor's point, you know, I used to drive through that when I lived in Vic Park every single day and it was all, you know, 1940s era cottages, little shotgun shacks and two-story, you know, um, multifamily efficiency types. So if we were preserving the character of that neighborhood, we would not have Flagler Village today. So how do we reconcile, like the mayor said, some aspirational new vision of a neighborhood with preserving the character of a neighborhood? And by the way, we may look back in 50 years from now and say, that was a historic neighborhood and we destroyed the integrity of the historic quality of that neighborhood. We may not, I don't know, but.
My suggestion, may I offer a charrette with the neighborhood? It's very effective, it's been done all over the world. You have a charrette, you have experts come in, you have government officials, you have planners come in, you have neighborhood leaders come in, you have stakeholders come in and you have a long discussion, you say, this is what we have now and this is what we're proposing. How does that make you feel? I know that a lot of the people that own those homes were probably pretty excited when it all came down to it because they wound up walking away with a whole lot of cash. So there's ways to motivate people, beyond cash of course, but visionary. And if you have a charrette, you have an opportunity to bring it to the public. You have an, like in this particular case, you would have, and certainly the Galleria, you have an opportunity to have a, a much greater discussion about what the opportunities might be on both sides. Clearly you're trying to, uh, keep a balance, but I think that preserves the character and the integrity of the neighborhood as it becomes redefined based on a point in time. Because right now, sure, Flagler Village, if it, it doesn't look like it did then and I remember it then, it was a dump.
Yep. But it, it also, and the reason I bring it up too, because we also then run into one of the most hated words in urban planning and that's gentrification.
Yes.
So we have pushed out everybody that could afford to live in Flagler Village. They can't live there anymore. They've all been forced out of that neighborhood as we've gone upscale. So folks that had, you know, a, a little studio apartment, $800 a month are now looking at $3,000 a month for a one-bedroom. So, you know, that, that aspirational becomes gentrification and destroys affordable housing. So I, again, very complex kind of, uh, series of issues that we're, you know, trying to bring together under a larger umbrella.
I agree and I'm, I'm very much aware of that and I think gentrification is happening on a lot of different levels and a lot of different places. The city of Minneapolis has, uh, back in 2022 passed a new code, our code changes to allow for multifamily, mixed-use, high-density, near residential neighborhoods. And they did that to address affordable housing issues. In this particular case that we're talking about with Sage, that's not affordable housing, starting at $3 million.
No, no.
So I think you can, you can achieve that.
I want to take this away from just Sage because what we're trying to craft here is our approach to dealing with issues going forward. So all this comes up in the context of Sage, which I think, I'm, I'm glad that kicked off this dialogue and this conversation. But, you know, when we're talking about changing the code and we're changing our process, it really needs to be, as you said, we're gonna have many more projects coming forward in the future. And I want to know for, for us, you know, as, as the folks that are going to be tasked with implementing all this, how we do this in a holistic fashion, not just project, not just related to one particular project, but I want a, a more, a more global kind of look at, at, at how we understand this issue.
And I agree and that's why I'm suggesting a mechanism would be neighborhood charrette. Because that does give everybody a chance to weigh in on it in a very public forum. Okay. Can I say one more thing?
Go ahead.
No, that's right. I'll, I'll save it for another time. Thank you.
Okay.
To address one thing that you had mentioned earlier, we had just said this a little bit earlier. When they, one thought that we had kicked around was that something doubles in size, basically. The question is, does that trigger an automatic, you know, how do you get the clock to start? That might trigger an automatic denial, you get your 180 days back. So just keep an eye on what we do here, that's some of the things that we're looking to address.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, so Chris, I think you have some direction as to what, um, what we need here to, at least as far as first steps are concerned?
I sure do and I appreciate the conversation, the comments from the public. I think it was a very worthwhile discussion today and we'll, we'll take a lot of this back and prioritize these, these code amendments.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Moving on to CF1, the audit of internal controls of fuel operations. What's that about?
I'll start and let you know. Patrick Riley, City Auditor, good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. The City Auditor's Office performed an audit of internal controls over fuel operations. This audit was included as, as part of our annual audit plan. Just a little bit on the background, um, under the Public Works Department, the Sustainability Division operates the Fleet Services. The Fleet Services is, is responsible for fuel operations and related technology. It manages five fueling stations around the city, delivering unleaded diesel and diesel exhaust fluid, which is, um, an additive to approximately 2,000 vehicles in auxiliary units such as miscellaneous equipment and gas containers. Fleet uses two methods to control access to fuel, cansever devices and fuel fobs. A cansever device is a telematic device which is plugged into the vehicle's online onboard diagnostic port, which is typically underneath the steering wheel. It's, it scans vehicles onboard diagnostic system and collective vehicle and driver behavior data. The other device is called a FOB, it's an electronic device that uses radio waves to communicate with the system. Fobs are used in a variety of situations with vehicles that were never equipped with a cansever or with vehicles that have cansevers that has, that have malfunctioned. Also, fobs are provided to personnel dispensing fuel into gas containers and fueling small equipment. Additionally, there's a master FOBs that are controlled by management and they provide individuals, um, with fueling if, with, um, situations where there's malfunctions or emergency situations. As with cansevers, authorized users swipe either their city ID or fuel card before fueling. And fobs, as mentioned, are issued by the fleet personnel. Fleet dispenses approximately 1.3 million gallons of fuel in fiscal year '23 to city departments and other authorized users. The cost was approximately $4.2 million. Fuel is tracked by using a software called FuelView that is part of the EJ Ward system. On page of our report, there is a, a diagram that shows a process of how the fuel is, um, dispensed and how it's recorded into, um, the EJ Ward system. The objectives of this audit involves an examination of city's fuel operations, specifically the internal controls to fuel consumption. Our scope and methodology, the audit included examination of 100% of the fuel consumption data downloaded from the EJ Ward system and review of related internal controls. The audit covered the period of October 2021 through September 2023. The audit methodology include, but not was, but not limited to reviewing related laws and regulations, reviewing best practices, reviewing contracts, interviewing appropriate personnel, performing process walkthroughs and tests of controls, performing, uh, detailed testing and of transactions and records. This audit was, was performed in, um, in accordance with the generally accepted governmental auditing standards. To summarize our audit conclusions, the City Auditor found that internal controls related to the administration and oversight of fuel consumption needed to be enhanced, implemented appropriately and monitored more diligently. During the audit, we identified opportunities to enhance the areas. First with the development of standard operating procedures for fuel operations. Number two, establish of sufficient controls over fueling access management. Who and where and when can people access the fuel? Third, improvement over tracking of fuel consumption. The key findings I wanted to discuss briefly are findings one and three. As I mentioned, there are no, there, one of the important things is standard operating procedures and there needs to be, uh, a much improvement in creating those standard operating procedures. For example, but not limited to access granting, terminating, assigning and revoking the fobs in the fuel cards. Right now it's kind of a, uh, you know, informal type of process of getting the fuel cards and terminating and so forth. So I think that it needs to be strengthened. Also, um, recording, um, also, um, data inconsistent with, which flows in the EJ Ward system that, um, prevents accurate fuel consumption tracking. Fleet Services currently developing stronger internal controls such as limiting FOB usage and regulating the amount of frequency of refueling. These, these are like parameters and limitations that you want to have that you can develop management exception reports where, example, if, um, fu- fuels, uh, the same card that someone would be fueling up multiple times in one day would, would trigger that, that type of activity.
Well, are you finding that? Is there abuse of this?
No, we, we, we were, we didn't see that. And we're gonna do a further extension of, um, um, work in this, in the Fleet Service area, but it's important that we have some type of procedures and controls because right now we're not really aware of it. That's the whole key of internal controls that things come to your attention that, that, that may be happening. But that wasn't really part of the audit at this point. This was really just making sure what kind of controls that we had in place. And, uh, you know, we found that there was some, you know, places where some improvement could be made in that area. So again, you know, the, the potential is misuse, waste and abuse of the fuel if, um, if you're not be able to have some monitoring tools that make up part of the internal controls. You know, today, you know, gas is an expensive commodity that's always in demand and proper safeguards need to be in place. Uh, as I said, there's a subsequent report in progress and we'll cover other topics with, with the fuel operation in the future. Management concurred with our findings and is implementing actions, plans to address them. This basically completes my, uh, presentation. I would like to thank Public Works Department, Sustainability Division, specifically Dr. Gasman and Drew Newstrom for assisting us with the audit and also would like to thank my auditor staff that worked on the audit. And if there's any questions at this time, I'll be glad to entertain them.
I, I just want to know what triggered this audit?
It, it's something, um, like each year we, we put an audit plane together and we, we're trying to, uh, as, as we go through the, the city, look at some areas that we've never looked at or haven't looked at in a long, long time.
Okay.
So that's pretty much what triggered that. It's, um, you know, there's, we've, this year, we picked a couple of areas, like the paving contracts, um, to take a look at, they hadn't really been looked at for a while. We looked at how on the parking, um, um, meters and the parking collections process work this year. So we, we're starting to take different areas and take a look in areas that haven't been looked at in a long time.
Okay, okay. Very good, thank you. Anyone have any questions?
I do have a question, yes. With the enhancements that you're suggesting, um, what do you see far as a, um, we're implementing these, financial impact, what are we gonna see possibly estimation of, um, a change in what we're? what we're, how this would affect the outcome with these changes?
I mean, as I stated, we really didn't get into substantive testing of the fuels by vehicle, for example, but the idea is that you have controls in place that will bring to the surface situations that may have places where we're questioning how fuel is being expensed and how much is being expensed by standards, and again, the software is very good in developing a lot of different things that you can get what I call a management by exception report that will, that will trigger that, that you can look into these type of things. There could be, you know, very, you know, I mean, in general, there could be some shrinkage there of, or, you know, misuse of funds, but it would hard, I wouldn't want to put a dollar amount on it without really looking into substantive testing, but we definitely think that there's some controls that could be put in there, and some procedures about, you know, people no longer in that department that have, that need a gas card, has returned that gas card, and things like that, so we make sure that we're, gas is being used properly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Pat, we appreciate it. Let us move on to city commission reports. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any reports for us today?
As usual?
No.
Okay.
I will say one thing, though, we're just, again, very thankful that Dottie Mancini Park is reopened, I was up there this weekend, and it was just...
Is that you on the swings that I saw?
That was, that was, you know.
When are we going to be able to reopen it officially?
So, we need to have that conversation, I've talked with Susan about this, and I think we need to coordinate with Broward Health, and really do a nice reopening.
A grand reopening, right, but right now, it's the soft opening, so it's open, open.
But I will tell you, so I was up there, and there were a lot of kids playing in the park, and everybody's just very excited that the park is reopened, they're enjoying it, it was a long time coming, but the response in the neighborhood up there was, I was walking around, was just incredibly enthusiastic, so.
All right, very good.
Just to, everybody that was involved, I know Susan put a heroic effort into getting that done, so I just want to say thank you, and I can tell you, the neighborhood up there really appreciates it, so.
Very good. Commissioner Beasley-Pitman. What have you been doing the last couple of weeks?
Oh goodness, it's been raining, right?
It's been raining.
You know, I'm looking at this, so many things have been canceled and postponed. Far as things that would have been actually out and about, there was one event that I was given an opportunity to, also with my office, there were galas on September, excuse me, October the 12th, the Fort Lauderdale Links Chapter, they've been in the city and operating and encouraging young ladies to meet their potential for 50 years. So we did attend their gala, which was, it was the Emerald City, so everyone was in beautiful green. Also, we have in the city Dr. Bostic, Ciara Bostic, she has a girls group that's called God's Gift, and they celebrated a gala for 15 years of being in the community and influencing and encouraging young ladies to meet their potential. Also, coming up events, events that are pending and coming up, we will have opportunity for the Sprouts Bus and the Mobile Food Market this Thursday the 17th. We are at New Hope Missionary Baptist Church that addresses 1321 Northwest Sixth Trunk Boulevard. We're inviting everyone to come, this is our opportunity for everyone to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables at a very affordable pricing. Friday, the 18th, is Carter Park Jams, that is at Carter Park, it starts at 7:00 PM, ends at 10:00 PM. Also, we are preparing and excited about the Riverland Parks Trick or Treat Event, which will be on Friday, October 25th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And that's it for today, that's all we've got.
Okay, great, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Wednesday, October 2nd, Mayor, you and I had the pleasure of witnessing the ribbon cutting for the La Solis Isles undergrounding. That project's been a long time coming, and this was the first neighborhood that actually went through that entire process. We have one street still, we're waiting for a little bit of attention, with some lighting from FPNL and also some paving.
Can I interrupt you just for a second on that? So, I visited the Shady Banks neighborhood this past weekend, and one of the ladies told me that they got a notice from FPNL telling them and the neighborhood that FPNL is going to do an undergrounding project in their neighborhood for free. Does anybody know about that? Anyone from Public Works, Commissioner, do you know anything about that, Alan? So they got a notice?
Doesn't sound like FPNL.
Well, right, they got a notice on their door, and the lady went and inquired, and they said, yes, we want to do your neighborhood, and it will be forthcoming. So, just to let you know, you've never heard anything about that, Commissioner Sturman?
No, I haven't heard anything about that at all.
All right, well, I was walking through Shady Banks and looking at, you know, this flooding situation that, you know, that was brought to our attention, and, okay, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I just wanted to...
That's okay, but you did. So, you know, that's an interesting point that you bring up, because I have heard that in the past from other neighborhoods, even in my district, where FPNL has reached out to some people over the last few years for like hotspot areas, where it's just a constant issue with them.
Right, of trees and all that.
Yes, and I have heard that, but I've never really seen it, I've never seen it come to fruition, I've never seen it really happen, so, you know, I don't know, but it could be people try to impersonate companies all the time and utilities, who knows what goes on, but it's worth us trying to find out if that's really true.
All right, that's why I brought it up.
But I know what you're saying, but I have heard that in the past, again, have not ever seen it actually happen, but I know that people have been approached with the thought of that maybe happening. Anyway, that was, congratulations for the La Solis Isles. Saturday, October 5th, Mayor, we were part of the International Swimming Hall of Fame Honoree Induction Ceremony, for those that you did not know, that is covered now for, again, second year in a row, by ESPN Plus Live. This year, it was not at the Parker, I think it was, was that the Parker last year when Michael Phelps came? That was last year, I think, right?
It was, yeah.
Last year. Anyway, this was at the Weston Hotel on the beach, a lot of really good positive attention for the city, with, I'd say about 300 people in attendance from all over the world, from every nation that was involved as being an honoree. It's really quite an interesting ceremony, and quite very special for that to happen in Fort Lauderdale, and then also to be broadcast around the world on ESPN Plus. Monday, October 7th, Chris had mentioned the mixed-use workshops that are happening around the city, I was at the one at George English Park, that was the mixed-use zoning workshop, hopefully we're moving forward with all of that feedback, and I wanted to thank all of the residents that did show up for that particular workshop on the 7th, and I know that we are taking that around the different districts and inviting folks to come and give their thoughts. So I look forward to that progressing, because I think it's really important to see how we're going to treat those corridors in the future. Tuesday, October 8th, I want to thank Susan Grant and Ben Rogers for attending our District Two President's Roundtable. We had an excellent, excellent attendance from all of those neighborhood presidents, we covered a lot of ground, it was also very fortuitous that it was right when we didn't really know what was happening with the storm, so what a great, great opportunity for all of those neighborhood presidents to hear how very well we were prepared as a city for whatever might come our way. So again, I wanted to thank you for being with us on that day, it's always informative, it's great to see all of the neighborhood presidents share, learn from each other, network, and really just get to know each other, so again, thank you Susan and Ben for being with us on that day. Friday, October 11th, was Yom Kippur, I hope those that observed had an easy fast, and wish everyone a good year ahead. Last night, thank you, Mayor, very positive, it's always incredible to hear all of those accomplishments, what we have achieved as a city in the past year with the State of the City Address. I will tell you that when I first met with the Panthers and we walked around, and I think actually, Mayor, we walked around together when those very beginning days at War Memorial, and we saw the condition of that building, and it was sad, because that is really our first civic, our first civic space in Fort Lauderdale, 1953, and what they did, I'm just really impressed, it was great to walk around, it was great to see what they did in that space, I think that's going to be a very popular venue for a lot of reasons, and I love that they kept the historic integrity, the bones of that building from the exterior, and also inside when you first enter.
Well, they kept the bones, but they added a lot of flesh.
Yes, well, that's, you know what, that's what historic preservation is all about.
Repurposing.
Repurposing, keeping that carbon footprint, showing that you can retain the historic and also add on, in other words, historic preservation is not incompatible with redevelopment and development, as so many people think, and it really can be a win-win. War Memorial Auditorium is a perfect example of how historic preservation works, because they've kept that structure, the outside looks very, very much as it did in 1953, and the inside is totally repurposed, and really perfect, it's a great space, and I'm looking forward to seeing all of the things that will actually happen in that building, but they did a great job, and I'm glad that we have that new place now in our city. This morning, Mayor, you and I were at the South Florida Symphony Orchestra, new headquarters, very proud that that orchestra, which services all of the South Florida counties, has moved its headquarters from Wilton Manners to Flagler Village in District Two in our city. Nice turnout this morning for an early morning event like that, congratulations to the South Florida Symphony Orchestra, we certainly welcome them, not just to District Two, but the entire city of Fort Lauderdale, and we're happy that that is your, that is your new home. This week, just coming up briefly, we have groundbreaking ceremony at the International Swimming Hall of Fame, I believe that's tomorrow, and Friday, after a long period, but it's looking absolutely fantastic, is the DC Alexander Ribbon Cutting, right across the street from the International Swimming Hall of Fame. We have an important interactive open house workshop for Sailboat Ben coming up on the 22nd. Wednesday, the 23rd, Sun Serve has its gala. Speaking of War Memorial, the Greater Fort Lauderdale Alliance is having its annual dinner meeting at the War Memorial on Thursday, October 24th, so that venue is already getting the attention. In Flagler Village, we have a new opening of the Loudie Bar on Friday, October 25th. Saturday, the 26th, we will get a chance to celebrate at the Diwali Festival at the La Solis Oceanside Park at A1A in La Solis. Tuesday, the 29th, we actually have coming up a La Solis Marina Ribbon Cutting, which is incredible when you think of that project and the path that that has taken over the years, but just in time for the Boat Show, which we know is opening on Wednesday, October 30th. So it is a busy time for District Two and the city of Fort Lauderdale, with all of these events that are happening, and we look forward to all of them. We'll round out the month with the Victoria Park Civic Association's Halloween in the Park, they'll be doing this at the Iceplex in Holiday Park, and they have a tremendous turnout every year for the Victoria Park Halloween celebration. I just want to mention one thing under comments, and I know that Susan, and we've discussed this, but on June 18th, I did submit a memorandum to staff and also to my colleagues, talking about flooding and some ideas that I thought might be making sense, you were kind enough to respond and let us know some of the things that are already happening, and since that time, we also do have something that I had asked for in terms of a chief resilience officer. What I would recommend going forward is that perhaps we could just get a periodic update, flooding and climate change is, seems to be a big topic of conversation going forward, if periodically, we might have just an update on how we're doing with all of that, that would be just greatly appreciated.
Does that conclude your remarks?
That concludes my remarks, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Sturman?
Oh, just a few things I want to talk about. City Manager, I just want to thank you, Susan, for, as well as Colonel Dodd and Dr. Gassman, and for helping us out, we had a series of neighborhood Zoom meetings prior to the hurricane that was coming down, that, thank goodness, it spared us, but preparing the city, getting the word out, and participation, and alleviating fears of the neighborhood, I want to thank you all very much for participating. Number two, this brings me to the second thing, I want to remind everybody, especially in my district, District Four, to continue signing up for our texting service, it's at the city's website, we have our page on the city's website, there's a link to sign up for texting, it's proved very useful over the last two years, traffic update, road closures, when the tunnel goes down, we've had a school lockdown, and then the lockdown was lifted, a gas leak, it would have been very valuable had there been a hurricane, but even on a daily basis, it's an exquisitely useful tool. And one last thing, I would like to call down Police Chief and the Fire Chief, if you want to just come up here just for a second. Thank you so much.
What did you do now?
Come on, I was nice, I was nice to you, Chris, wasn't I? It wasn't too bad. Chief Schultz, Chief Gole, on behalf of my community, I want to thank you and your men in service for, what I understand, I've heard from several people, that we have deployed several of our police and fire to the hardest areas.
I was going to bring that up tonight, I have a list of all the people, so we're going to recognize them all individually tonight.
Well, that's, thank you so much, but I just, okay, so now there's two of us, but I'm going to echo what you, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing that, but just want to thank you personally, and on behalf of my district, and obviously on behalf of the city, thank you for all that you've done for our friends up north.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that concludes my report.
Is that it? Okay, great. And Chief Schultz, I need your list. I need your list of the individuals who participated, all I have is the Fire Department. Okay, thank you. Do you have it?
Yes, Scott sent it to me, we're going to print it out.
Okay, thank you. A lot of what I would have to report on has already been repeated, so I don't want to go over that, but there were a few others that were not mentioned. First of all, I want to thank the Chabalubovich for inviting me and Commissioner Herbst and Commissioner Sturman for that wonderful dinner that we attended on October 2nd, wonderful festive occasion, it was very great to break bread with the community there. We had the relaunch of the Boat Yard, beautiful restaurant over on 17th Street, Clausway, it has been reimagined several different times, but it still doesn't lose its excitement and charm, and didn't have a chance to eat anything, but hopefully next time I get there, I will. I also, the National Hellenic Student Association decided Fort Lauderdale was going to be their meeting place on October 4th and 5th, and I was able to give welcoming reception, reception remarks at their opening, and also the next day during one of their meetings. Commissioner Beasley-Pitman and I attended the Carlton Moore Family and Friends Day on October 5th, this was a wonderful way to recognize former Commissioner and Vice Mayor Carlton Moore, who was on the city commission for 20 years, I believe, yeah, yeah, and for all the great work he's done to promote his district, District Three, over the many years that he represented, and my shout out to the family and all the folks that helped put that together, did a great job. October 13th, just this past weekend, I attended the United Church of Christ and delivered a proclamation recognizing their 70th anniversary here in the city of Fort Lauderdale, it's a great community, and Pastor Aaron, the new pastor there, has just been very great in attracting new members, and it's been a very successful congregation over the years. And I want to thank all the members of our staff who put together the State of the City Address last night, it was a tremendous success, and Strategic Communications and everybody, the Clerk's Office, and Susan's, Susan, your office, everybody who did such a great job in putting that together, thank you, thank you so much. I want to thank the DDA for helping to construct the remarks that were made last night, and if you look back, it's a very proud... And, and if you look back, it's a very proud moment to see all the work that this commission has done and accomplished, along with the, the members who serve the, serve the city. We all have much to be proud for, and I want to thank you all for all of our efforts in making Fort Lauderdale the great city that it is. I just want to say something about the ribbon cutting for the South Florida Symphony that took place a couple hours ago. You know, it's great that South Florida Symphony has chosen Fort Lauderdale as its, as its new headquarters. And the reason why that's important, as we have said in many of our speeches, is how important culture is to the, to the experience of living in Fort Lauderdale. And to have the South Florida Symphony locate itself here in our city is one additional recognition of how Fort Lauderdale continues to add to the cultural mix of what, what it means to be a Fort Lauderdale resident. They will continue to perform at the Broward Center and at Parker, and at the Parker, but it's just their very presence here adds to what I feel is the, is the cultural matrix of, of theater, of symphony, of, of music, not just music, but all kinds of entertainment that, that the, the folks at the Performing Arts Center have really brought to the city over these many years. So it's great that, that it is, that Fort Lauderdale has sort of drawn this symphony to its, within the city and recognizing the city as a place where it needed to be in order to promote itself. Let's see, on October 17th, I will be attending the Tri-City Mayor's Panel at the Pub in Wilton Manners at 8:30 a.m. I'm sure I won't be the only person at the pub at 8:30 a.m., knowing its history, but there will be three mayors, me, Mayor Scott Newton from Wilton Manners, and the Mayor of Oakland Park. Three of us will be there to discuss economic development. I will be delivering that same morning, the welcoming remarks at Florida Recycling Partnership Foundation at noon at the Baptist Health Iceplex. Let's see, that same day is going to be a busy day for me. I'll be speaking at Startup, which is our own Daphne Sandville's first business cohort that's going to be presented that afternoon. And then that evening, at Allied Kitchen and Bath, Decor for a Cure, hoping to participate there and help Bill Feinberg, who's such a great community partner, who is, who is doing a fundraiser for, I believe, his breast cancer.
What is the date on that one again?
That's October 17th at 7:00 p.m.
Yes.
The 18th, I don't know if you mentioned this, Vice Mayor, the ribbon cutting for D.C. Alexander Park, did you mention that? Okay, okay. The MODS, the Museum of Discovery and Science, on the 18th, that evening, is having its annual wine, spirits, and culinary celebration at 6:30 that evening. Next day, I'm not sure, I think you mentioned this, the Imperial Point Fall Party that's happening at the Imperial Point Drive, that's on the 19th, that starts at 1:00 p.m. in the afternoon. They decided not to do it at Dotty Mancini Park because they had already set up everything for this other location, so, but going forward, I would imagine that we'll continue to be using the Mancini Park as the center for many of those activities. On the 19th also is the Winterfest Boat Parade Launch Party. That's at 7:00 p.m. at the Marriott Harbor Beach. It used to be called the White Party, now it's called the Launch Party, so I know everyone's invited to attend that. The Greater Fort Lauderdale Alliance Dinner you had mentioned is going to be at the War Memorial Auditorium. I hope someone from the commission will be able to attend. I believe I have a candidate's conference, a candidate's forum that night at, in Coral Ridge, so I'm probably not going to be able to attend that. Let's see, Croissant Park is celebrating its 100th anniversary on October 26th, my sister's birthday, and that'll be at 3:30 p.m. I'm told that you all have agreed to dunk yourself in the, in the dunking machine. I think I'm going to pass on that?
I, I was told to wear my bathing suit.
Okay.
3:30?
3:30 in the afternoon on 26th.
They go to sleep early in that neighborhood?
Let's see, on the 27th, I'll be delivering welcoming remarks to the Ocean Exchange at the NSU Levon Center at 4:00 p.m. That's the, that would be the next day. Let's see, you mentioned the La Solas Marina, boy, we have just busy schedules.
Yes, crazy.
On, on October 30th, very important day, the Vice Mayor mentioned it, but I'd like to make sure that everyone is aware that that's the, the opening of this year's International Boat Show, and it's really, really important that, that the community come together and welcome all the guests that will be coming to our city during that weekend. The opening of the show is at, at 10:00 a.m. at the, it's, it's usually at the Super Yacht Village, but we haven't, it says the location to be determined, so we don't know that yet? Okay. So we'll, we'll, we'll be putting out messaging as to where that will be at the, as we get closer to that date. But again, that's going to be in the morning, 10:00 a.m., and if it's not at the Super Yacht Village, it'll be somewhere in that vicinity. The next day, the, as the Boat Show continues, the Marine, the Marine Research Hub Summit takes place at 8:30 a.m. at the Bahia Mar. That'll be in the Purple Zone. It's usually on the boat that they have docked there. And then the next day, November 1st, I'll be delivering welcoming remarks to the Riviera Australia Yacht Company's booth at the South Pacific Stand number 870 at Bahia Mar. Got all that?
Just the booth?
Just the booth.
Are you in the booth?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyway, so, we have an exciting city. So much is happening. Our season is about to begin, and we can tell from all the remarks from the commissioners how much, how much Fort Lauderdale has drawn attention to the world stage and, and how great Fort Lauderdale is a place to visit and enjoy. So if there's no further comments from the commissioner, I ask the City Manager, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you. I'm going to ask Dr. Gassman to come up and just give you a report on the upcoming King Tide, and while she comes up, I'll just let you know that I'm going to be attending the Large City Executive Forum this Thursday, Friday, coming back Saturday night. This is a group of city managers of cities with a population of 200,000 and above, and I guess we're the smallest of the large cities, and they give us an invitation, so hopefully we'll come back with all kinds of great ideas.
Did we cross that threshold yet or not?
No, we did not, but I, I, I think Lee Feldman started this group, so we just have a standing invitation because we're close enough.
Well, it's, it's, it's a moving target because we have a, we have a primary residence population of one number, and then we have a seasonal population, which kind of doubles that, and then, and so it's, it's a bit unfair that people, you know, assign a lower number to us when in fact it's much, much more. But go ahead, go ahead, Dr. Gassman.
Dr. Nancy Gassman, Deputy Public Works Director and Chief Resilience Officer, Mayor and Commissioners. Our current period of King Tide was going to go from October 14th through the 22nd. As I spoke to you last commission meeting, our September period was one of the most severe that we had seen. The current period looks like it's going to be similar and has the ability to potentially be even worse than what we saw in September. The basic message is that we will be seeing very high tides. Areas of the city that don't normally flood may see nuisance flooding from the upcoming tide, and we are expecting rainfall on Friday. And anytime we have rainfall that's concurrent with the high tide, we can expect a wider extent of flooding, and we can also expect that those areas that are normally impacted by these tidal flows, that they will have standing water for a longer period of time. I also want to mention that we are, we are unable to mitigate flooding from rainfall during a high tide because we, there's nowhere for us to pump because it's like pumping the ocean. So during that time, for that six-hour period around the peak tide, there will be very little that we can do to mitigate the flooding during that period.
We need to build a cistern. All right, so, so that's an announcement to our neighbors that should they be subjected to a King Tide, and they're wondering why we're not there to try to mitigate the impact. It's because we have no place to put the water.
Yeah, we're, we're unable to pump because pumping will be ineffective because we're experiencing this, this tidal flow at the same time.
Right, but it will eventually dissipate though, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll be doing messaging as well on the city's various social media networks and et cetera. So we'll be doing our best to get that word out.
Anyone have any questions of Dr. Gassman?
I do. Nancy, you mentioned that some neighborhoods that are not normally impacted should expect maybe to be impacted. Could you tell us which neighborhoods those may be?
Yeah, I can't be specific, but for example, the Dolphin Isles neighborhood, when we have very high tides, they tend to get slightly impacted, so that would be a neighborhood. These are, these are mainly coastal neighborhoods that are right near or right on the intercoastal waterway.
Would that be an opportunity for them, maybe sandbagging or anything like that? Any preparation that they could do with for, you know, mindset for those six hours?
Yeah, the, the major impact normally related to these King Tides is on the roadways. If we get significant rainfall during that time, there is always the possibility of water intruding into private properties. In the majority of the areas that we know are regularly of concern, we've already put out semi-permanent no-wake signs to make sure that people are not rushing through the neighborhood and driving waves up into private property. But certainly for those neighborhoods that know that they get impacted during these tides, using sandbags and other types of remediation to try to prevent the waves from impacting their garages or other low-lying parts of their home is certainly something that a private property owner could do to mitigate any potential impacts.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone have any other questions? There being none, thank you so much. Anything further on Susan?
No, thank you.
Okay, Tom, any question? Okay, so there being no further business of the city commission at this conference meeting, this meeting is now concluded.[1318.48]